Right now.
Good. Good evening. Tonight's meeting, we begin with a public hearing and I will let our superintendent introduce that.
Hey, thank you. We're gonna turn it over to Dr. Farnin to go through the school code of conduct. Any updates, any changes, any pertinent information per our practice? You know, he'll go through the student code of conduct and then each student will receive a copy based on the adaptation or adoption, rather, excuse me, of the code of conduct. So Brady, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you to go ahead and get started.
Thank you. So I do have Bridget Barr and Jason Shetler joining me to present this tonight. It was brought to my attention that our DASSA coordinators were off. We do have a new one for the district, so we will be updating that. But let me just go to share my screen. All right, are you able to see that?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, and Bridget's gonna kick us off.
All right, thank you for having us here tonight, this evening, and giving us the opportunity to provide you with an overview of the district's code of conduct. The code of conduct that we currently have was revised in September of 2020. And the purpose of the code of conduct is to provide an overview of the expectations for the district in order to create a safe learning environment and provide clear expectations of internal guidelines as well as an external statement of our values and commitments to our school community. It also provides our community with a principles of character, tolerance, citizenship, and integrity. It's important to know that our district code of conduct applies to all of our school community members, including students, school personnel, parents, and any visitors. One thing you'll know in our most recent code of conduct is that in the most recent update, the legal statutes that had been provided to reference were removed and the language has been simplified to make the content more accessible to all community members who may use it. Go ahead. Throughout the code of conduct, you'll see some important terms that I wanted to give you some definitions for, because there's some things that we've been really focusing on as a district, and Jay and Brady will go into detail about that. But when you see school property listed, it's important to understand that that's referring to any building, playing field, or parking lot with the district. For cyberbullying, that's referring to our code of conduct saying that it can be something that happens on school grounds or off school grounds. So it's not just something that's happening when the students are directly on campus. It also could include any type of cyberbullying that happens off school grounds as well. Discrimination refers to discriminatory acts on school property or to school function that includes but isn't limited to discrimination based on the person's actual or perceived race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group, religion, religious practice, disability, sexual orientation, gender, or sex. In our current code of conduct, the definition of illegal substances has become very specific. Formerly, you were informed to refer to New York Public Health Law 3306 for a list of illegal substances. Now, all of those illegal substances are right there in the code of conduct and includes a list that's comprehensive, including alcohol, marijuana, and others such as heroin, or any other designer drug, and is provided to refer to those illegal substances in the entry. One update that was made is to the tobacco products, really shows the, you know, time that we're in, but it includes vaping and nicotine-containing devices or products as well as the ancillary items such as matches or lighters, and it also covers any products that may imitate or mimic tobacco products. The term "under the influence" was expanded to include consuming an illegal substance within a time proximate to presence on school property and/or exhibiting symptoms that would cause a reasonable person to conclude illegal substances were consumed. And finally, the last one I want to point out is, please note that our current code of conduct generalizes the type of weapons banned from school. So as opposed to listing every weapon you could possibly have, it's generalized, and you can go to that section to see what that looks like. Go ahead.
So I'm gonna talk about some relevant and recent changes to the code, and one of those changes has to do with DASSA, which is the Dignity for All Students Act, and the fact that a report would be turned in once a year, kind of describing bullying, harassment, and discrimination. And Ms. Barr just talked about some of the different characteristics of discrimination. There's also language prohibiting retaliation. So if a report is filed and followed up on, the person can't retaliate in any way on whoever submitted that report. The dress code, as was the case with weapons, has been streamlined. So it used to list a laundry list of specific items that could not be worn in school. So now it's just kind of generalized language that gives us more leeway, and it doesn't get us all hung up on specifically what things are listed. Just talks about revealing clothing, clothing that's unsafe, clothing that promotes drugs, alcohol, or any other banned substances. In terms of offenses resulting in disciplinary action, it was added that if you violate another student's civil rights, that's an offense that could be specifically addressed in our code. Alternative instruction, there was language in there to really make sure that if a student is, their regular educational program is changed or altered, that it's based on the specific needs of the student. It's appropriate to what that student needs. It's not in any way punitive, and if there is a situation where a student is no longer on campus, those needs need to be met specifically. Interrogation by law enforcement officials. So there's specific language in there that if there's going to be a police interrogation, then all the parents, you know, guardians need to be notified prior to, and they'll have an opportunity, you know, to come in and make sure that everything's happening according to what's in the best interest of the student. So unless that officer has a warrant or extenuating circumstances, the parents need to be notified prior to that interview. In the safety plans, we have district and building-level safety plans that need to be updated and developed. We now have a district safety team and a building safety team that meets recently to make sure that we're doing everything that's needed to make sure that our students are safe on a daily basis. We engage in walks around the building with our SRO and facilities person, other building administrators, to really see any kind of vulnerabilities that might exist, to make sure that there's no easy ways of entry or, you know, opportunities to kind of vandalize, make sure that the lighting is all working and up to snuff. So that's really helps us to ensure that our kids are safe at all times on campus.
So if an infraction has occurred, there, as an administrator, we take a lot of different things into account. So the first thing would be the student's age. Consequence should be developmentally appropriate for that student, the nature of the offense, the circumstances, their prior record, the effectiveness of other forms of discipline. If we've given something and it didn't work, then obviously we would try something else, because really, our objective is to hopefully improve a behavior and not just have that repeated. We were also taking into account information from the parents, the teachers, and other people that may have seen something, and other extenuating circumstances. There's a range of consequences. So we, at level one, it may be something such as tension, lunch retention, loss of a privilege, and really, we also use restorative practices at level one, really trying to reengage that student and use it more of a teaching experience than punitive and consequential. At level two, that could be where it's a move removal from instruction. So that may be in-school suspension, extended detention, a loss of extracurriculars, or a short-term out-of-school suspension. Level three is for more severe infractions, and that would be a long-term suspension or a permanent suspension. In those cases, we would have a superintendent's hearing. So support and implementation. Document states that the Board of Education will help support in-service education. And so I wanted to highlight some of the things that we have been doing to really put an emphasis on those areas. So really, we're focusing on safe and supportive school climates, and we've been doing the Savvy Ally training for our entire district staff, and that's promoting the LGBTQ plus and really embracing that safe school community for all of our students. Also discouraging harassment, discrimination, and bullying, and we're doing Sweethearts Heroes to really promote empathy and finding commonalities amongst one another. In classroom management, we've been promoting responsive classroom. So that's trying to really hone the skills of our teachers and really working on the classroom management process. So those are the big changes that really kicked off last year, and those are the things that we live by with our code of conduct. And again, this is something for the entire school community. So the code of conduct is something that applies to our staff, our students, community members that come into our school. So it's really something that we live and use, we use to guide are the decisions that we make as administrators. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just had one thing I wanted to say. I appreciate all the time that everyone took to put this together and to update it. It was pretty impressive reading.
Thanks.
Are there any questions from the public regarding the code of conduct?
There doesn't appear to be.
Okay, I am gonna draw our hearing to a conclusion and thank the presenters. Great job, Brady, Jay, and Bridget. Appreciate your work on this. Appreciate you spearheading that subcommittee of our administrative team. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. With the hearing closed, we are able to begin our board meeting this evening. The meeting is now officially opened. Would you please stand, everyone, for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move to approve the agenda, board members, I would like to add in number three, under reports and correspondence, I would like to add one more report, which is the chair of the buildings, or the chair of our board, Standing Committee, Buildings and Grounds, Jason Sloan has a report for us as well. So please add that. And at this time, I think I better.
Send her.
Yeah, Linda.
Can you also add the four county?
Yes.
As well?
Yes, sorry, Linda, forgot that. And also to number three, the four county, Linda's our representative to that, she has a report. So add Linda Egner. Okay. At this time, then, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Motion, please, Paul and Jason. All in favor, because we're going back online, let's try and see if you can, board members, all wave. Maybe I can eliminate this going down our list of names every time.
I can see everyone all in a group, so I'll be able to see that you're waving.
Okay. All in favor, then, of approving the agenda. This is a test.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, motion is carried. We begin tonight's board meeting with a student presentation, and Michael, you are going to introduce, I think.
Yes, it's a pleasure to introduce Marin Lo Profito to the Board of Education. Marin is a senior this year. She's the class of 2022 president. She's what we would truly consider one of our superstars. She's both athletically and performing arts inclined, so you'll see Marin out on the soccer field. You might also see her on stage as she participates in the musical. Marin is also somebody who challenges herself in the classroom. This year, she's got a schedule that's comprised of AP and Gemini-heavy classes, and Marin's hope is to pursue nursing next year, and she's narrowed her scope down to Brockport, Roberts Wesleyan, and St. John Fisher. And I think all three of those schools would be very happy to have a scholar of her caliber, and I'm certain that she's going to be a very successful nurse, but I'm hoping that she takes the time and enjoys the next 39 weeks of her senior year here at North Rose Woolgate. So Marin, I'm gonna turn it over to you and let you go ahead and, you know, kind of speak to the board and inform them about what's going on so far at the high school, what's going on with soccer, and just overall general thoughts. Thank you for joining us, hon.
Hi, thank you guys for having me tonight. Thank you, Mr. Paul, for introducing me. So as you heard, I am a senior this year, and I just wanted to talk about all the exciting things and opportunities that North Rose Woolgate has or has given me. They do offer a lot of the Gemini classes, which are really good, so I get a lot of college credits that I would need to go into pursue my career that I want. And also, they also have a lot of sports opportunities, so I'm able to play varsity soccer and get to have the opportunity to play on a team and kind of grow and learn with those people. And I'm also doing the New Visions program, so it's a BOSI's program, so I get to do lots of nursing stuff, and I've only been there for two days, but it's really good opportunity for any student that wants to go into that sort of field. You get to do all sorts of fun stuff. I learned how to do blood pressure, so if anyone needs to get their blood pressure taken, I can do it. So yeah, I think there's a lot of cool opportunities. I'm excited to be back in the building this year and have everyone together. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. We're delighted to have you, and we're impressed with all your doing and happy for all your experiencing. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for Marin?
I appreciate her enthusiasm and her and the way she's described her experiences. I think it's, she's very well spoken.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know Marin's gonna do great, and no matter what she does. I first met her at the eighth-grade dinner when I was washing dishes with her mom in the cafeteria and watching her hustle around even in eighth grade. I've seen her on the soccer field, I've seen her in many different performances at school, so congratulations on being a senior, Marin, and good luck to your future.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. We're happy to have you with us. The next presentation is SWBR and Campus Construction.
Marin, you're okay to jump off if you've got other things to do. Thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you, guys. Have a good rest of your night.
Bye.
All right, good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, great. Well, the project really reached a great milestone. Back on August 31st, we passed our final BOSI's Fire and Safety Inspection and have submitted substantial completion to SED. So it is quite a milestone. All the kids were able to go back to school as planned. We do have a few open items that I'll get into. But as you saw during the ribbon cutting, one of the largest areas yet to be completed was that auditorium. And it made quite a transformation with the seats, the final carpet, the actual curtains and drapes. So that space has really come together. There are a few items that are open that we're chasing down. One of them, and you've heard us mention this before, is we've had some door hardware changes that were part of a change order. That hardware has come in over the course of this week and maybe a couple of days next week. We'll be finishing up that door hardware. Most of that is concentrated on exterior doors and some common doors around that have the card-access locks. One of the other issues that was unsuspected for us was a defect in the chilled beams, which are the HVAC units contained in each room. That, we had to replace 100% of the pans in the building. We had originally projected that to be a two-week duration, but due to some manpower and some supply chain issues, they had to refabricate these. They almost took two times as long, almost close to four weeks. As far as the building and getting all the architectural elements installed, it didn't hurt us in that capacity, but it did delay our final fine-tuning of the HVAC system, which is our final commissioning. Now, I wouldn't say that that keeps us from having a fully functional HVAC system, because it is fully functional and working, and we are climate-controlled, even though the most important guy's off, well, second-most important guy's office, the principal at the middle school. We've been working on adjusting the cooling in his space. We do have some miscellaneous data in power locations that came up where we added a copier and we had to provide some power. So those are nearing completion. And the team will really start transferring our efforts to final training for the owner, O and M manuals, and completing any punch, open punch list items. So that's the update we have for today. I'd be glad to answer any questions or if there were any comments about anything that you've seen.
George.
Could I ask a question about training for these complex systems like the heating and air conditioning, training our people?
Correct. So it's a two-phase training. They do, they do training onsite. It's not just a one occurrence. So I believe we have two onsite trainings, and that's done in the field with DAY on their automated system. They also send representatives from the school district to what they call the DAY Academy, and it's a more concentrated training, more on the mechanics of the software, whereas the site, it's site-specific, this is your unit. Same thing is true for some of the lockdown features. I know that similar system is installed over at the high school, so that knowledge will transfer over, but they, again, will, will train those folks right at the middle school on a system that's installed.
Can I just jump in really quick, John? This is Dave Phelps with SWBR. As part of the specification, all the mechanical, electrical training that's being provided by the manufacturers, not just DAY Automation who's doing the controls, is also part of that to the school, to the employees, and that's also recorded and then handed over to the district for future employees or future training if needed. So there's extensive training still to have.
And five years from now, 10 years from now, that manual will be with us, or we will have a link to another company for software training?
I believe, I'll verify and I'll get through to you from Mr. Paulin that I believe it's a DVD that's handed over to you or a CD that can be viewed on a computer.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Mark, did you have anything you'd like to add from SWBR?
No, I wanted to make sure that you heard that there would be video, so you would have long-term asset for future training. If anybody trains today goes away in a year, you do have that in five years, John.
Yeah, that is a concern. Anyone else? Linda?
I was wondering if there is an estimation of when all the details will be completed that were mentioned in the report that need to be finished up.
I would say by mid-October, some of the, some of the things that may string along is some of the electronic hardware that was added as part of these door hardware. So we will have locations that have card access that may drift behind. Our goal is the lion's share of these open items are completed by the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much for being with us, and we wish you a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to reports and correspondence, and we'll start with our building liaisons. Hi, Sada, do you have anything to report from the elementary school?
Yes. Mrs. Glues, today, I'll tell you. We're going to try to do it through emails, and my feeling on that is, is one less person in and out of that building that they have to keep track of terms. And it also gives her a chance to, until one is convenient to her, not just as I show what I'm scheduled, and I'm there, so that's what has to happen. So in response to that, she was telling me about what they've done. And they've moved all the classrooms around, with the exception of five. That being said, they have also done the moving out of the middle school, and they have also had six weeks of summer school. So they've been kind of busy. The maintenance crew, she wanted to mention, because they had done a fantastic job, and she mentioned Tammy, Kent, Nina, Marvin, Nate, and the student workers. And they, they did a fantastic job. She was very pleased. The teachers started this last, last week, not this week, getting the classrooms ready, and I managed to do a special, well, I did a job, because they got basically new or different classrooms, because they moved everything around. And in doing that, they've come up with some extra space, and they added a couple or three new items. And one is a sensory pathway room for the kids with sensory integration issues. A sensory room and an instruction, an instructional coast coaching suite for the teachers, coaches, and for UPK rooms this year. So they've been very busy, and they're very pleased to be at school.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm sure it has been a very, very busy time for all of them. Mr., any questions? Opening up this year. John, do you have anything to report from the middle school?
I've contacted the administration. First of all, I went on a tour, the open house, well, not the open house, the open community house on the 23rd of August, and talked to the building principals and assistants, and people were there, and they were really excited to open up the building. Needless to say, I've been to a number of commercial community things around, and I've had question after question, "How do you like it? How do you like it?" And I said, "It's airy, it's light, it's clean-looking, it's wonderful." And if you get a chance to go in, they would like to recognize Anthony Vazoz and two student employees. They put a lot of effort into getting the rooms open with furniture, boxes, unboxes and boxes, materials to bring in and for teachers to get ready. They also had developed some opening activities to build up relationships, teaming with fellow student-to-student and staff-to-students. And that's all done to create a positive environment for our middle school. And that's all done to create a positive environment for our middle school kids, especially after our year of a half of COVID being restricted. So they're really excited about opening a new building and I'm sure they have headaches galore and all the little things that happen that our construction people say they'll take care of. There are a lot of other things that they can't take care of that aren't construction-wise, but are within the building. It has to be a living building, which I think it will be. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And moving on to the high school, Linda Egner is our liaison to that building this year. Linda?
Yes, I've been in touch with administrators at the high school and they were very pleased with the opening. They felt it was very positive. The teachers, of course, were very happy to have all the students back. And their main focus really has been building and developing the relationships with their students and and helping the students to reconnect with classmates and get get rolling. They have reinstituted something that was done in the past in the morning. They've been meeting in forum as a student body, which is a very positive thing for the whole community at the high school. Tonight is the high school's open house, which is taking place as we're having our meeting. They're also going to be having, in addition to looking at classrooms and meeting teachers and so on, they are also going to have representatives from Delphi, from Wayne Behavioral Services, from Kent's Family Counseling of the Finger Lakes will be there. And the Council of Alcohol and Addiction of the Finger Lakes will be there. And also, in addition to that, Kenny Drugs is going to be offering COVID-19 shots. And they're also offering flu shots there this evening. So that's a welcome addition in these times for sure. So they're off to a great start there.
Thank you. Busy places. Jason, would you like to report on your buildings and grounds committee?
Yeah. Last Friday on the third, Mr. Pullen, Mr. Bonville and myself spent a couple hours together getting to know each other while we toured all of the facilities. We started in the maintenance building at the middle school. We traveled to the elementary school at the bus garage and some of the building itself. And then we traveled to the high school. We were able to identify a lot of good practices that we're doing already relating to proper maintenance. And we also saw a couple of things that we might want to look at in the future as far as adjusting those processes. Mr. Pullen was pointing out things that might be part of future capital projects and some things that the district might just want to do on its own in the in the upcoming years. I've got a pretty good report on what we had done and the Buildings and Grounds Committee is expected to meet later this month. So I'm sure the committee itself will be coming back and informing everyone of what what we discussed. But that was pretty much it for Buildings and Grounds in the month of September.
I understand you were quite thorough, even climbing up on the roof and walking around to inspect. Is that correct?
I saw areas of the district that I've never seen before.
Probably none of us have seen.
I wish I knew about them when I was in school, but.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're glad. We certainly our taxpayers have a big investment in our buildings and our grounds. And there'd be, I'm sure they'll be happy to know that you're taking good care of them. And that's an important part of of the business of running a school. Thank you. Linda, you have a report from four county school boards?
Yes, actually, the there were two board of directors meetings. The first one was on August 17th, and that was an in-person meeting where we reviewed policies and norms. And the main part of the bill of the meeting was the report about the search for the replacement for Dr. Marla Iverson. At that point, there were several exceptional candidates and they were going to be having their final interviews shortly after that meeting on the 17th. Well, then, this past Tuesday on September 7th, there was an emergency meeting of the four county board of directors because they do want to present the final candidate to the four county Board of Education at their meeting in mid-September. So the candidate that was approved by the board of directors is going to be presented. And he's and he really is an exceptional individual. He has experience as a teacher. He was a member of two school boards. He was a building principal. He was a district financial officer. And when they called all of the references, they were very enthusiastic and couldn't wait to tell the search committee all about this individual. So at the next meeting, hopefully, we'll have a new director for four county.
Great.
Oh, another tidbit from the first meeting. They talked about the New York State School Board Association Convention in New York City this year. It's going to be taking place in a hotel that opens up this month. So next month, the there'll be the that will be the first big event. But the piece of information I was tickled to hear about is that next year's convention will be held in Syracuse. Just FYI, closer to us.
Yes. Oh, I wanted to ask you, is it at the September general membership meeting? Is that, do they vote on this new director? Or is that strictly something that the board of directors does?
No, it isn't actually the board of directors. The board of directors is involved in the search committee, but the four county school board members, which were not the ones that we elected in in May or replacements in May, that board will make the accept.
They make the final decision.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Any questions for anyone? All right, we'll move on to public access. Tina, is there anyone for public access tonight?
I did not have anyone email me or reach out. No.
All right, thank you. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. John and Tina? Questions, discussion? It goes through page six on your agenda.
Everyone received the updated agenda that I had sent out, adding item 21.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, hearing no or seeing none. We will vote then to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of approval? Raise your hands. I see you all. Thank you. Motion is carried and the consent agenda is approved. Tonight, besides the fact that we've opened up, our kids are back in all their buildings. Is there good news? That you'd like to share, Paul? Are you muted? I'm not hearing you. You have to unmute.
How about now?
Ah, wonderful.
Okay, well, I have a few.
Okay.
Some nice articles in the Lake Shore News about our soccer teams, both boys and girls. Of course, we were there, most of us board members, but this was a really nice article also about the awards given out to our staff for their attendance and also a use of service. Lois Waffler wrote a very, I believe, accurate and complimentary notice about our Leavenworth opening. Really a nice touch. Hey, I got another student from our school that's excelling, Skylar Fox from Wilkett as a junior in biology at the Lemoine College. So he's on the dean's list. And then another nice article, Sarah, who's come to our district just recently to, you know, take over community, the special services. So great for Sarah and a nice article and very nice write-up.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good news? We'll move on to the superintendent's update then. Michael, you're muted.
Yep, I'm gonna try to share my screen, so bear with me. Let me know if you can see that.
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so just want to kind of go through some of the highlights. You know, Bill Bonville's on here tonight. We heard it earlier and I want to kind of.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I've lost you. I've got on my browser here a launch meeting picture. Tina, is that the other? Does anyone else have that?
No.
It's just me?
I have back to school.
I have back to school. Okay, I'll try to find it.
So.
We can still hear you, Cinda.
Okay, I'll be careful.
So I just want to start off by recognizing Bill Bonville and his entire staff. They've done an exceptional job. You heard that earlier through many of our administrators recognizing our buildings and grounds and our maintenance team. You know, Bill came in, I believe it was June 2nd, started with the district. And in a few short weeks, had to really learn processes and procedures and and, you know, turn around and get our buildings ready for our summer programs. And simultaneously to our summer programs running, he had shut down two two sections of the elementary and the high school and merged them back into the middle school. We also heard that, you know, Tanner and Tristan and Anthony Vazos from the middle school staff were integral and helping out. And I would say, you know, all of our staff members in maintenance and operations deserve a round of applause for the miracle that they pulled off in such a short amount of time. Their efforts are truly appreciated. And again, it's been an uphill fight because we've run into, you know, construction delays. We've run into personnel issues with shortage of staff and people being out or injured. So Bill's done a phenomenal job. And if you look at that picture right there, you know, that's something that we've all been anticipating for quite some time as students enter into Leavenworth on opening day this past Tuesday. And it was a beautiful morning. So I just want to kind of piggyback on a few of the things that have already been shared. You know, we were able to make it to all three buildings for the opening. And there's some statements that each of the building principals were able to come up with. And I want to highlight a few things because, you know, with our opening, we have faced some challenges. We've run into some busing delays. As you know, we've transitioned over to a new software program. So that's caused a couple of delays and, you know, we're we're opening up three buildings for the first time in several years, let alone, you know, the two buildings being run during pandemic or prior to the pandemic, we were running two buildings. So now we're back in full swing with three, three buildings in the district, three very different start times. They're trying to get it done into two runs. So Jeremy Barnes and his staff, they've been doing a great job. Each day it's getting a little bit better. Our hope is that by tomorrow, it's it's right to where it needs to be. I know he's reached out to the vendor and the vendor's working with the software to try and give parents a more accurate time. But I think the highlight here really for me is that every building had to change configurations for their lunch accommodations. You'll know that the guidance from state ed came out two weeks ago on a Friday afternoon and it caused us to alter our reopening plans. And last week, we got more guidance that offered up specific configurations. So we had a lot of things that took place over the long holiday weekend to make sure that students were able to sit six feet apart, enjoy their meals from our food service program and eat in a relaxed setting, you know. So when you think about all those challenges, you think about the operation side of things from our transportation to our maintenance operations and food services. It really is a bunch of people rowing in the same direction to get us to where we're going in a positive manner. And I think that Christie summarized it best. When you look at, when you look past the challenges and you listen closely, you hear the joy and laughter of students, how they participated in our fall field day activities. Teachers and staff were able to build relationship and focus on team-building activities within their classroom. And I think right there in the middle, we have a bunch of teachers and staff that care deeply about our students. They care deeply about our community. And I think it speaks volumes about what our opening actually looked like and how much our district has come together in in these last couple of weeks. You know, going to the middle school, again, that's a great view right there as you see our students coming up the sidewalk. And for our eighth graders, they were the last students in that building to attend. They they attended that building in fifth grade. So for them to come into the middle school and enjoy Leavenworth one last time, to have that be bookend experiences for them in the middle school is fantastic. And you're going to see a common theme from our pre-K through 12 program, which is our academic focus this past week has been on social emotional learning activities. You know, allowing students and staff to come in, re-acclimate to being a person five days a week and take the time to get to understand, you know, each other, get to understand some of the nuances that they're going to face under this pandemic setting and how to make the most out of it. And I think that, again, if you look at Mark's quote there, I've highlighted a few things that really summarize what we've been dealing with over the last couple of days. Teachers taking the time to observe and reflect practices, you know, things that they're gonna figure out about each of them individually as learners, understand how to support and challenge them. And then I, again, want to highlight that component in the middle, that students are smiling. They were enjoying scavenger hunts. They were enjoying the activity periods and the time to get together and socialize with many of their classmates that they haven't been able to be involved with on a regular basis prior to March of 2020. And lastly, you know, the high school, you know, if you take a look at that picture right there, there's some stuff where we're acclimating back into the environment. We have students and staff participating in an activity together and really trying to reintroduce them into the school experience because, as you know, the new normal is not really normal compared to pre-pandemic times. But they've been doing a great job this week. Tomorrow is the end of the first full week. Next week, we have planned activities with some national presenters coming in to work with our students and staff throughout the week. I'm excited about the team from Sweethearts and Heroes coming in. I look forward to their presentations and, you know, we round out next week with open house at the middle school and open house at the elementary school to really set our students and our families up in a successful way. So that's it pretty much for me. I'd be happy to take any questions that board members have at this point in time. I know I spoke rapid fire, but there was a lot to get through and I just wanted to hit some key points. But if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions, but I I appreciate for parents' sake and the kids' sake the upbeat atmosphere that our kids went back to school under after being off for so long. For some kids, they coped with it very well. For others, not so well. And to come back to school for some might have been no problem at all, but for some it might have been. So this helps, I think, for staff meeting and relating to kids and kids relating back to the teachers. It's got to help for the whole year. Thank you for seeing that through.
Thank you.
Linda?
I just want to, I want to echo that again. I think, you know, it's something that was a concern last year staff-wise, parent-wise, they were concerned about kids and how they would re-acclimate to school and how they would feel about it. And I think the focus on their comfort level and how positive it has been has been just what we should be doing.
Thank you. Yeah, our team's been very excited. Thank you, yeah, our team's been very excited. The administrative staff worked very hard this summer as a full-blown commitment to welcoming everybody back, students and staff alike, and we're, we're really looking forward to you know, this work continuing throughout the fall and throughout the school year. And, oh, we're working on some goodie bags right now for our students and our staff. Um, we're excited to get those out in the near future and our, our target really is um if we can avoid the, the, the impact of COVID, we're really looking forward to homecoming weekend on October first. And, you know, we're, we're talking about some activities that we think we have three soccer games and a volleyball game on that Saturday. Uh, we're really looking forward to that as a community-wide event and for most of those activities because they're outside, there's no, there's no capacity limit and you know, we were trying to work on some things to kind of bring a new tradition forward and let our community celebrate together. So hopefully as time comes on, we'll reveal some more information at our um upcoming board meeting later in the month to highlight what we have planned for homecoming.
Great. All right, that um, that completes our agenda. Um, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Tina and Isada, um, all in favor? Okay, I see them. Thank you. The, the motion is approved. I bid you all good night. Thank you for being here and I hope things continue to go well as we continue our school year. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.